To call this meeting to order on the informational meeting regarding our possible construction project. So, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
We have to call to order first, which I guess we're not, oh, it's only a work session.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
Yeah.
We're okay.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone. As suggested earlier, I'm now going to turn this over to Mr. Sesker.
Thank you. And what we would like to talk about tonight is the idea of a construction project for the district office space and the adult basic ed space. I'm going to invite a couple of folks up here so that the TV camera can see them, they can clearly speak in the microphones too. And as are coming up, our finance director, Colleen Murdisdorf, and our director of buildings and grounds, Kevin Hildebrand, and our architects, if we can find some room up here, would be great. And I'll let Kevin do those introductions, but the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the construction project. The rationale for the construction project was to see whether or not we could save lease levy money and try to figure out another financial means to support the two buildings. And we do believe we've come up with a solution. And at the same time, we can actually build a couple of these spaces to accommodate our staff. We've engaged the architects, and I'm going to have Kevin introduce in just a second. After the architects get finished speaking, we'll allow the general audience to come up and ask questions or comments for either the board or the architects, or Kevin can certainly answer those as well. And then we'll move into the finance piece. And so if you have questions about the finance piece, you may want to wait till our financial presentation is done by Colleen Murdisdorf. And then, again, after the financial piece, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions and answers. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kevin Hildebrand, our director of buildings and grounds, who's guided us through this entire process, which has been a very positive process, and it's been probably over the last four or five months. So, go ahead, Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you Superintendent Sesker. I'll start with a brief history of where we've been over the last, basically, we started talking almost a year ago now, on the discussion of renting versus owning. Currently, we rent space for our district office, and we also rent space for our adult basic ed program. Both those spaces, we're using our lease levy, which is a tax for the taxpayers to pay. So, we started talking about the possibility of building, basically, again, renting versus owning. And it has come down to a point where we went to the school board sometime, a few months ago, to ask permission, since we went as far as we felt comfortable, that be an administration giving school board numbers and guidance, and asked for professional help, that being an architect, to come in and help us with the numbers. With that, school board agreed. We went out to an RFP, a request for proposal, to ask four different architectural firms to present to the school board their proposals to help us along this journey. And with that, we chose ISG, a local group, a local architectural firm here in Fairville. We have started, we had three committees that we formed right after that. The facility group committee, school board members, administration, community member, and a couple students. It was one committee. The next committee was our administration, or cabinet level committee. And then the last committee is our user group, or those that will be housed in these spaces. With that, we have met with the architecture group over several months, putting together the wish list of needs, wants, space needs, and we've reviewed that several times. Most committees have met several times. The user group has met once, and we will meet again as this progresses farther along the way. We, after our first couple of meetings, we got it down to, got a number for a square foot for both these spaces, and now have refined it down to something more manageable, taking out some wishes here and there, but it's got it down to a number that we feel is affordable. And as you'll hear later from our business manager, you will hear the finances on that, on how we arrived to those numbers. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to ISG. We have three members with us tonight. Brian Jurney with ISG, Bob Mickelson, and Robert, I have a hard time with the last name.
Grzeszowski.
Grzeszowski. With that, I will turn it over to them to talk about our next step, or what they have found out for us.
Thanks, Kevin. I think just to start the process, we wanted to make sure we vetted all options available to, you know, analyze what space would be available and what locations would work for these, for the different programs. And we literally started with looking at availability on sites at all of the school sites that are owned, as well as if there is any offsite locations in town. Through the course of the process of going through the meetings and vetting the different options, what we've arrived at is the preferred options being the middle school site on the southwest corner of the existing building for the district office, and the high school site on the southwest corner of that as well for the adult basic education program. In short, it was, the, both sites had plenty of real estate to accommodate some addition, as well as the ability to reconfigure parking and add more parking for the additional functions at both of those sites. Like Kevin said, we started on, with the process of finding out everything that might be needed in these facilities. And through the course of several meetings, we started narrowing down on the specific needs for each one, and, you know, and pared it down now to the must haves to meet the needs of the district in both of the, for the adult basic education program, as well as the district office program. In the end, where we're at right now for the adult basic education program is just over 11,000 square feet to meet their needs. And for the district office, we're just over 12,000 square feet to meet those needs. The, you know, budget was developed based off of these square footages, and it's based on what we're seeing for current, you know, prices in the industry, as well as trying to forecast, you know, where these prices might be going a year from now on. We feel pretty comfortable that where we're at with the numbers, everybody understands we're trying to watch the dollars closely, but also, you know, making, providing facilities that will meet the needs of the district, both short term and long term, that if you're going to invest these dollars, let's make them, let, make these facilities last. Anything I didn't touch on?
I don't think so. I think I'll just add that during the process and meeting with everybody in the school district, we found specifically that to best suit the needs for both ABE and the district offices, that having the two sites to build on was, turned out to be sort of the thing that came out of all the meetings, and we'll go ahead and serve, serve the needs of both best. As before, it was considered that both functions would be on one site. However, due to just the nature of ABE having a stronger relationship with the high school site and the district offices being in a very visible site and the middle school site, really, the progress of that led to, I think, what's going to be a very, very good solution for everybody moving forward.
Well, if you want to bring up the site plans there, we'll kind of just briefly touch on those.
All right. What you see here on screen is, is an overhead of the high school site. And you can see in the center of the image approximately a green shaded area where the addition onto the southwest corner of the existing high school facility, the adult basic education spaces would be added, as well as some enlargement and reconfiguration of the existing parking in that area. We will be required to do a parking study of the area, but the plan overall is to increase parking that is available there, while still allowing circulation on the site, and avoiding any reconstruction of the existing athletic facilities.
Middle school.
Maybe go down to the bottom one. The construction that will occur on the middle school site will be in the southwest corner of the site. The area that's highlighted right now is the area that's proposed for the addition on, of the district offices onto the middle school. It is apart from the main entry to the facility, which is further to the east and the north. So, the district offices will have their own entry, and they will be able to be secured off from the rest of the school. However, they will share in the parking on the site. Parking will be reviewed, and most likely, we will have a need to add some parking spaces on the site. But the idea is to disturb the site as little as possible while providing the extra parking that will be needed. This, therefore, we can keep the site construction manageable and inexpensive.
That's really about what we have to provide at this point there. If you want to proceed to the questions and answers, we're going to do financial next.
Yeah, yep. So, we'll do questions and answers on what we've done. Thank you for the summary of where we started and how we got here and what we ended up. Maybe just, just a quick review of the square footage space of the adult basic ed site and the middle school site one more time. What is the square footage for the?
Adult basic ed is at just over 11,000 square feet, 11,388. The high school, or, sorry, the middle school site for the district office is at 12,131 square feet.
Okay, great. So, at this time, if somebody would like to come up and make a comment or have a question about the facilities, we'd be more than happy to try to answer those. Oh, yeah, and there's a sign in sheet too, so if you don't mind, please put your name and the information that's on the sign in sheet. And by the way, if there's a question that we can't answer, we'll have your name, and we can find the answer, do some research, and get that answer back to you, if you'd like.
Hi, my name's Chad Wolf. A lot of you know me. Thanks for having us tonight. Just a question for you on the overall facilities plan. When you showed the high school plan, it looks like you're taking some parking between that southwest corner of the high school and also the college. Has the board and the facilities group looked at long range plan of overall facility needs that, that might be wanted, you know, five years, 10 years in the future type of thing at the high school? I guess that's a question. I don't know if there's any dialogue that goes back and forth type of thing or not.
Yeah, there is in this situation.
In this setting, okay, sorry, thanks.
Maybe you can address the issues that we had as a result of wanting to put both things at that site.
Yeah, one of the logistical challenges, we had originally looked, it's on the west side of the school, there's a little El Cove that's a prairie area right now, kind of identifies itself as a good spot to do a combined facility, so we had the district office and adult basic education there. Programmatically, it was difficult for adult basic education, for parking especially, with, you know, in and out access all day long. And the only parking that is on school property right now on the west side is, what about one row, that's about 40.
Three stalls.
Forty-three stalls, or, and that part really made it challenging. As we've gone through the process, the other part that started to work its way out too was the, combining the facility created some inherent conflicts on, you know, how do you make it accessible to everybody if you got a multi-story building? And as we reviewed the site on the high school there, the, that southwest corner, there is enough real estate there to, in essence, if we reconfigure how it's arranged right now, we can maintain the same amount of parking. But then, if we, there's a small area, triangular piece that if we capture some additional parking there, we don't affect the existing practice facilities, and we really minimize our site infrastructure costs. So, that was kind of the process of reviewing and.
I think the other thing is, if you're looking at, maybe, Bob, you can answer this too, is any future construction, the limitations that the high school area brings us.
I think one thing, and Brian did actually some of this up pretty well, one thing that we found was that, we asked the question, if, if all things were sort of perfect to start, would you actually combine the ABE functions and the district offices? Would they, would they be functions that would coexist together normally? And the answer we got was that, well, no, they really probably wouldn't be best functions to combine together. But I think the other thing that came about in this is what we learned, was that there's probably a greater need to keep that prairie area open for future expansion for classrooms and other needs. That area being kept open is going to provide greater value in the future. You can probably get as many as 15 to 20, you know, 15 to 18 classrooms in that area, or, you know, there's lots of different options. I think the value there, we found, was, you know, a combination of separating the functions of the ABE and the district offices, putting them at the sites where they're most appropriate, and then leaving the prairie area open and available for future construction.
And I guess more to my question is, I don't think it's a secret, I sent it to every one of you board members, a letter signed by 13 athletic organizations, and you all received a letter from Dr. Parker earlier this year. And just about a potential, in this, when I say a potential, it could be two years, it could be 12 years down the road type of thing, of a fieldhouse type of thing, that is similar to one in Cannon Falls where Mr. Sesker was superintendent of, before he came here, in the beautiful fieldhouse over there. And my question is, does, does putting ABE in that exact location, does that eliminate a potential fieldhouse at the high school type of thing? Because you only do have so many practice fields outside for football and baseball and fast pitching, things of that nature. So, I'm just thinking more of a, a longer term comprehensive plan type of thing, and I'm just asking the question if that was all looked at with putting ABE there at, at that southwest corner of the high school.
I think that just, my, personally, I don't know what you guys, as we went through that process, trying to figure out the limitations of the site, the high school site, that's something that we would have to take a look at. How much square footage or additional space can we add? Because the one thing I learned over these last three months is the parking is a huge issue. And I think there are some things that have to be resolved in order for something like that to occur. I mean, if you look at something like that at the middle school site, then I would say there's no problem. There's plenty of room out there, and maybe you guys can chime in on that too. But the high school site has some limitations.
Yeah, and I just talked about that, like I said, from, from a long range, big picture standpoint, if you ever wanted to partner with the college on that.
Right.
And, and I think a lot of us would like to see the, the public schools and the, and the college expand their relationship as much as possible, and just thinking in the future, if you put something like that at the middle school, should it ever happen in five years, 10 years, whenever, it's pretty hard for them to partner on something like that at the middle school.
Right.
When it could be right out their back door. So, that's, that's my request.
There are definite challenges.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments about the additions? I'm not good with that uncomfortable minute that Jason has all the time. We'll move right into finance, and I think that's another hot topic that we want to talk about. It's been vetted just as the facility piece has been, and I'll turn that over to our director of finance, Colleen Murdisdorf.
Thank you Superintendent Sesker. I do have a PowerPoint, so I'm going to have Drew pull that up, and then we can look at some of the financial information of this project. Okay, so we'll go to the next slide. Kevin alluded to this a little bit, but I just want to review that this is the rationale behind looking at building these spaces. We currently lease space for four different areas, cold storage, the district office, adult basic education, and other community education programs. And then we have a special education setting for program building also. Now, these lease payments are funded by local levy dollars and their ongoing costs. So, initially, we wanted to research other options so that we can eliminate, hopefully, three of the leases, and thereby eliminate a majority of the lease levy, and then reduce the amount that the local taxpayers are paying in property taxes. That was one of the goals that we set when we started looking at this project. So, I'm going to go through the financial projections for each of those three leases and how we're going to make that work. So, first, we'll take a look at the adult basic education overview. Now, these are examples of financing. This is not set in stone. The board will have to make a decision about how much money they put down, how long of a term they want to go. We do have some parameters we need to work with, but they will ultimately make the final decision. So, just for the sake of the discussion tonight, this is one example of how we can finance these projects. So, as the architects indicated, the total estimated square foot is 11,200. I'm a little bit lower than they had, I think we made some updates beyond this point. So, their estimation is $200 a square foot is what it will cost us. So, the total cost of the adult basic ed program or project is 2.24 million. Now, if we take some money out of our general, undesigned or unassigned fund balance, it's kind of a down payment, we could use $800,000. We currently have an $8.2 million unassigned fund balance. And if we use $800,000 to put down, we could finance then the balance, 1.44 million. Now, this would be financed over 15 years at an estimated interest rate of 3%. I've checked with our financial consultants, and that's about the range that they're looking at in other financing that they've done very recently. So, that would have a monthly payment of just under $10,000, so the annual cost would be just a little bit under $120,000. And how we would pay for this is we would continue to do the lease purchase levy on this. Now, the difference is that at the end of 15 years, this lease would end because we're purchasing this property. Whereas right now, we're renting the property, so that lease doesn't really have an end date. If you look at the next slide, it will show you the tax impact or the levy details of this. So, starting in fiscal '17, which would be the first year that this building facility would be open, we currently have 7,000 square feet at the current location. And in 2017, our estimated lease payment is about 80,671. And that lease payment going forward has been inflated by the amount that we currently have as an inflated factor or an increase in our lease payments. We're proposing the 11,200 square foot facility, and the annual payments on that would be 119,328. So, you can see that this particular levy would actually go up, 38,000 in the first year, 36,000. It decreases because our mortgage payment, or the payment on the new building, would stay the same, but our lease payments have the potential to increase every year of those agreements. So, you can see, it will take us a few years to get that evenly paid out. The total cost of building the new property is 1.789 million, and so it will take us until 2034 to equal what that would cost us in lease payments. But what you can see in the levy is that actually in 2032, we actually see a decrease for this particular lease. Okay, so let's move on to the next facility. The district office overview, again, one example of financing. This is estimated to be about 12,000 square feet. So, at $200 per square foot, that'll cost us 2.4 million to build this facility. Again, we would want to try and put some money down out of our general fund, unassigned fund balance, and the figure I'm using is 800,000. So, we'd be financing 1.6 million. On this financing, we would probably try and do it over 10 years, again at 3%. So, our monthly payment is 15,450. Our annual cost's a little over 185,000. Now, these payments will be made out of our operating capital funds. We currently get operating capital funds every year to pay for facilities and equipment for the school district. And we do have some ability to use this money because we have two things that have happened recently. We paid off a bond issue, and that bond issue is using $100,000 out of that operating capital fund. And we also passed the referendum last fall that is covering some technology equipment, about 200,000, that was also taken out of operating capital. So, we've got about 300,000 in operating capital that has been freed up. So, that money will be used to help fund these payments. Okay, looking at the levy details on the next slide, again, the same situation, starting in 2017. Our current lease at 7,900 square feet of office space cost us a little over 87,000. And the proposed cost for the new facility would be 185,000. But again, remember, that money's coming out of operating capital. So, the change in the levy is a decrease of our current levy completely. So, we will save 87,000 in 2017 in levy dollars. That will go away, that lease will go away. And then you can see as you follow down the break even points, but again, the levy just continues to decrease. Okay, let's look at the last piece. Currently, we also have a lease for cold storage, and what we would need to do is take care of that facility also. So, we're looking at building a 6,000 square foot building at a much lower cost because basically, we're talking about a different type of facility. It needs to just house excess equipment and some maintenance equipment for the building. So, we don't need it to be as, the same as the district office or the adult basic ed. So, that cost is estimated to be 360,000. We wouldn't necessarily put anything down, so we'd finance that whole 360. Probably, it would be wrapped in with the district office financing, so that would be one financing package. So, we'd be looking at 10 years at a 3% interest rate, monthly costs of about 3,500, annual costs of about 42,000. And again, this payment would come out of operating capital, so we would do away with the lease and pay this payment out of operating capital. So, the next slide shows the details of the cold storage space. Currently, we have a 3,150 square foot building that we use for cold storage. The lease on that for 2017 is estimated to be 29,525. And the proposed 6,000 square foot building, the annual payment of 41,714, would come out of operating capital. So, our levy would also go away for the cold storage. So, our change in that first year would be a negative 29,525. Okay, so to kind of put this all in perspective, the last slide shows the total tax impact of doing this type of financing. So, in 2017, the adult basic ed lease would be an increase of 38,657. The district office would be a decrease in our lease levy of 87,000, and the cold storage would be a decrease in our levy of 29,000. So, we would have a net decrease in the lease levy of almost 78,000 in the first year. And then it just grows incrementally over the future years. So, the goal of trying to eliminate some of these leases is met by doing this type of financing and building our own property, and we also then do have some tax savings to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Murdisdorf. Is there any questions from the audience, any comments about this? Feel free to come up.
Sorry, I'm kind of a numbers guy. So, Colleen, just a quick question for you. On the first one of adult basic ed, and I realize this is completely an example, and
Yep.
Before even this happens, the board has to approve it and whatnot, but why on the first one of adult basic ed would that potentially be financed over 15 years and the other two potentially over 10 years?
Okay, there's a difference in the lease purchase financing versus just the outright borrowing financing, and that is dictated by the state of Minnesota, the Department of Education. So, if you're going to use local lease levy for payments of financing, you have to borrow it over 15 years. That's the requirement. The minimum term is 15 years.
And is that the maximum turn offs?
No, we could go longer.
Okay.
Yep. And so, it doesn't make sense in the district office space and the cold storage space to finance it over any longer term because you're just paying more interest. There's no requirement for that financing. So, really, we're structuring it around, well, how much can we afford to pay every year in payments versus what's the shortest term we can do it so we can save the most interest?
Sure.
Good question, though.
Thank you. Yeah, I just saw that was different on there. And then, last question, if you go to the last slide, your total tax impact, the very bottom right number, 2.639 million would be the total. The very bottom right number, two point six three nine million would be the total saved over ballpark fifteen years.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
It, so if that's the total amount saved, and this is just a, if the board approves this philosophical type of question, if you're saving two point seven million over that amount of time, does it make sense to take, in these two examples, one point six million out of the general fund, you know, eight hundred thousand potential down payment for, for the ABE building and an eight hundred thousand down payment for the, for the district office? Does it make sense if you're potentially saving two point, close to two point seven million in, in, in tax impact, does it make sense to take one point six out of the general fund? Or is there potentially a better use for that in the general fund? I, forgive me, I, I just don't know the answer and I'm just looking, you know, balancing, is, is there a utopia type of thing?
Yep, and I think that's a great question too. I think that's something that the board will consider. Just for the sake of the, um, presentation tonight, that's the number I use. That doesn't mean that's what we will do. Couple of things to consider, um, with that eight point two million dollar fund balance. Right now, we earn interest rate of point zero zero five if we're lucky.
Let's just call it nothing.
Yeah. So, you know, we're not earning anything on that money, um, so it makes sense not to pay so much in interest when you're borrowing, just like when you're buying a house, you want to make sure you put as much down as you can so you can save interest. But the flip side of that is, you know, do we have educational needs that we need to use that money for too?
Yeah.
So that's what the board will have to discuss and decide on as they go forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How do you determine the quality of the building?
Well, that's, that's a, a very good question. And, um, certainly there are standards that we're going to follow as far as recommendations and, and, uh, things that we're going to recommend that be included in the building. Um, but we also have the budget to keep in mind too. And, um, with that, there are certain things that, um, certainly would be nice to have, but, you know, we're going to have to restrict some of those things due to budget issues on that end of it. But there's always the, uh, the process that we go through when we're in the design to talk about, um, you know, the cost impacts, whether it be maintenance for Kevin Long Range or short, short-term maintenance and, uh, to go through those and, and give you, um, pros and cons of, of some of the materials that are selected on that.
Will it, uh, visually fit in with the existing buildings?
Ye- yes, that's important.
The numbers that we're using are, for at two hundred dollars a square foot is to, in essence, mimic the type of construction that both facilities have now. So, you know, traditional brick and mortar, um, and from a life cycle standpoint, that's a fifty to seventy-five year building. Uh, versus, you know, uh, other materials used are more in the twenty-five to fifty range. So, um, when you're making that sort of investment in public infrastructure, that's very typical.
Visually, we'll just be planning to make the buildings be, uh, fit into their respective sites, um, to blend in nicely and be visually attractive. Um, nothing ostentatious, but functional.
Other questions? Comments? Get an uncomfortable thirty second. Well, I want to thank the, the panel members, I guess, Colleen and Kevin and, and the architects. Uh, we appreciate you taking the time to do this presentation for the public at this open forum. I think it was both informative and got a couple of questions that we're able to hopefully answer. If not, then please let us know and we'll try to answer them better if we didn't do it appropriately. But thank you again. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our vice chair to adjourn the meeting.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. We are adjourned.